We call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City of Cottonwood Council, held on June 19th, 2012, at 6:00 PM at the City Council Chambers Building. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling.
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Howdige.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here. And I'd just like to mention for the council that our attorney is on vacation, so he won't be here tonight. The next item is Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Kristy Statler from the Arizona State Parks Foundation here to lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a certificate for you. (Inaudible). All that cool, whatever it was, yeah. I'd also just like to thank the city clerk in her office for creating these certificates. As you know, behind the scenes, there's always a lot of work being done, and we appreciate that. Thank you. The next item is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. And we have James M. Barker to speak with us for the public comments.
Aren't we supposed to?
Didn't we miss a couple?
Aren't we supposed to do a brief summary from us first?
Let's go ahead and switch this one, since he's already up there.
You can go ahead.
That's okay. We'll switch this item if you all don't mind. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council. My name's James Michael Barker. I go by Mike. And I'm a citizen, resident of Cottonwood, registered voter, and I'm homeless. Now, I do have the use of a vehicle, and a camper. So, of course, this camping ordinance that we had prohibits camping on public property. And I could, you know, I can understand that to an extent. But what I am questioning, and what I would like someone to answer for me, is, in the exceptions, it says that for a commercial parking lot, if you have consent, that is expressed or implied, you park there for less than 23 hours, and there are some other stipulations, that that's an exception to the ordinance. Now, "express" means that someone has to tell you, yes, you can park there. "Implied" means that, you know, you can park there because there's no gate chain across there, there are no signs, nothing to tell you that you can't stay there. Now, 23 hours in front of a business with a camper like mine, no, I don't want to do that. I don't want to do anything that might disrupt that person's business. But yes, I do need a place to spend the night, and that camper is where I live right now. I have, over the past few days, exchanged some emails with the chief of police, and he comes back with this statement that it's implied that there's no camping in a parking lot, commercial parking lots, that businesses imply automatically that you can't park there, and tells me that there's no camping in the city limits, and if I do it, I'll be contacted, and I may be prosecuted. What I would like to know is, what is the board's opinion of this? I mean, do we go by what it says in the ordinance? Or do we go by what the chief has to say? Or do we go by what is done currently? Because you can park at the Walmart. Now, most of my business has to do with Garrison Park, the community health, the post office, the library, and the recreation center. I'm a member of the recreation center. During the day, I'll go park over in the recreation center parking lot and take care of my business there. And I'll walk over to the park, to the post office, or may drive over there. What I want to know is why I have to exit completely over to the Walmart, or out of the city limits completely.
And unfortunately, if I would have read the appropriate information for the Call to the Public, because it's not on the agenda, we're not allowed to talk about it, or answer any questions. But I would suggest that you get together with our city manager, and discuss it with him, and possibly, he can alleviate some of your concerns. But we're not able to discuss it. But we do appreciate your comments, and thank you.
All right. And I know there are a few others like me, not all, but we would appreciate having someplace, you know, in a reasonable area that we could park at. We would think that city property would be okay at its designated area. But that's, there's nothing designated right now. And I don't see that a citizen should have to exit the city just because the sun goes down and I want to go to sleep. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. And just to go back to that, that was the Call to the Public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period, and I apologize it got out of order. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the Call to the Public for any items that aren't on the agenda? Okay. We'll close the floor to the Call to the Public. Back to the item that I had read, Brief Summary of Current Events by the mayor and city council and city manager. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, just a couple items. Last weekend, we had our annual daddy-daughter dance, and we had 88 people participate.
Wow.
More than we usually do. Usually, it's around 50, so that was very nice. July 5th, at 5 o'clock, behind City Hall, is our first farmer's market of the season, and so that'll go until dark. And then, July 4th, we have our fireworks celebration planned, and unless we have real high winds, it should be a go. And last but not least, the police department recently had a bike sale, where they got rid of all their bikes, and everything was sold out within 15 minutes. So, it really went quick.
Wow.
That's it, madam.
That was at, like, 7:00 AM, right?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I've got lungitis, and so I was going to really expound on the cooperation between the fire departments, Forest Service, Water Company, ambulance service over at the fire at the Catholic Church. It was amazing. Those guys put on their uniforms, and you don't know what department they're from. They were working with each other so well. I got there about 6:30 and left at 10:30, when it was pretty much down. But to watch the way that they worked together from Sedona, they brought their ladder, and without that ladder, I don't think we would have saved the church. And then, we had Clarkdale units there, Jerome was there, Verdi Valley had a couple of units there, Verdi Valley Ambulance, the Water Company was there the whole time, the police department. It was just amazing to see how well these guys worked together, and for so long. They were exhausted, but they kept taking over for each other, letting them rest. It was just amazing, and we've got a wonderful community to have that many people. I think it was a six-alarm fire, have that many people in one little area, working so well together. We are just blessed.
Thank you.
I got it out.
You did great. Mr. Pratt.
Yes. I just want to tell everybody that I did go see our citizen, who had concerns about the dog park and the nuisance. And I actually have visited her three times, and the second time I went, councilman Dowling went with me. And it was apparent that there were issues there, and I immediately talked to the city manager, and he has directed his staff to enact some, what we hope will be, solutions. If nothing else, it'll be short-term, and we will keep on this, and I just wanted to assure that person that the city does care about its citizens, and take those issues seriously. So, this looks like this might be on the road to being settled, and I think that's a good thing.
Solutions are good.
And serving the public.
Okay. Anything else? Let's see. For our City of Cottonwood Met a couple of weeks ago, and the city clerk attended, and also the chief of police, and the project that we're looking at, you'll probably recall from our seminar that we had in January, that the project that got the most dots on the board was a youth project. So, we're talking about a youth center. I mean, it's just starting on the very cusp of discussions. But there are a lot of people in the community that are interested in such a thing, and some of them, like the person from probation said, "I've been waiting for a program like this for 25 years." And even the chief, our chief, said the same thing, along the same lines, so we'll see what comes of it. I attended a tour of Rennie Radassia's house. As you know, he's, well, he's just got appointed to the Clarkdale Council, and he's a past mayor. But the FIT Kids Group did a tour as part of their summer youth program. So, that was very interesting, and seeing the gardening, and just, you know, they built a lot of that, the home themselves, and they, you know, use solar. The city clerk and I attended an AARP meeting last week, and this was just to try to apprise the community of some of the issues and changes that may be coming down with Social Security and Medicare, and being educated on the revenues, and where the funds come from, and the reduction in the number of employees that will be supporting Social Security and Medicare in years to come. So, it was very educational, I thought. I attended the flag raising for Flag Day at the VFW on June 14th, and I just wanted to compliment our city staff, especially Rick Contreras and other members of the fire department, for all of the flags that they placed around the civic center. They do this on special patriotic occasions. Cottonwood sponsored the Yavapai County Mayor, Manager, Supervisor, and Tribe and Nation Meeting on last Friday, and because we didn't have any facilities open in the city, they were all busy, Kyla made the plans and had it at the hospital. So, it was a great opportunity for me to share information about our hospital. It employs 800 professional and support staff, has 100 physicians, and I think it represents something like 25 specialties. But of course, these are some of our higher-paying jobs in the whole Verdi Valley, because people from all over work there. So, they did a great job on that. We had an update from the Water Advisory Committee on the water, from John Rasmussen, and on the Central Highlands Project that we're working on, the water model. And then, our Natural Resources Director, Tom Whitmer, also gave an update on statewide water issues, and how they impact the local residents. Today, the city clerk and I attended the Casey Rooney's Verdi Valley Ag Forum, and that was just amazing. Mr. Wood was there, and some other folks here in the room. But we had, like, six speakers, I think, and they, every single speaker just had so much to say, and it was so interesting. And Casey actually did this as a, it's part of his project central internship, and of course, like anything he does, it was perfection, very well organized. And that's our Casey. He's always very professional. And I did just want to mention that we had canceled our June 12th work session, and we will be holding our work session for June, on June 28th. Is that here at the council chambers?
Yes.
At 6:00 PM?
Yes.
At 6:00 PM. And that's my report. Okay. Introduction of New Employees. Who is that? Okay. Iris Dobler?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to introduce Amanda Wilber. She's our new human resources technician that joined us a few weeks ago. We're delighted to have her. She's picking up on things very rapidly, making good suggestions already, asking good questions, so I'm delighted to have her. I'd like to tell you just a little bit about her. She's young, as you can see. She's a Mingus Union High School grad. She's lived in the area about eight years, and just recently graduated from the Barrett, from Barrett, the honors college at ASU, with a BS in Business Management, International Business. She graduated magna cum laude.
Wow. Impressive.
Got a sharp one with this.
All right.
She actually worked for the city last summer as a water safety instructor, so she knows some of the employees, and particularly, with the rec center, which is helpful, as we're hiring and moving around part-time employees over there. She has volunteered at least three summers as a coach for the Cottonwood Clippers swim team. She kind of fell in love with a course she took at ASU in human resources. She wasn't quite sure what she wanted to do when she got out of school, but took a course in human resources, and said, "That's for me." So, we're delighted to have her. She was actually on the dean's list six semesters while she was at ASU.
Wow. That's awesome.
Took them to have her.
So, would you like to share anything with the council and the public?
Well, so far, I really feel my job has been better than I expected, and I plan to be here for a long time, so I'm really...
Fantastic. Well, welcome to our work family.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just wanted to compliment Iris Dobler, and thank her on behalf of the council. You are an amazing person, and you are an amazing asset to the City of Cottonwood, and we just so much appreciate all that you do. You're just everywhere, and so efficient, so thank you. You're welcome. Okay. So, Call to the Public, we already did. And the next item is item number eight, Approval of the Minutes. We had lots of minutes to read. We had the budget work sessions of May 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 2012. Any comments from the council? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Dowling made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding agenda items are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. There is no old business. On the consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one, Agreement with the Old Town Association for the funding provided by the city for the promotion, development, and enhancement of Old Town Cottonwood. Item number two, Agreement with the Verdi Valley Senior Center for Funding. Item number three, New Liquor License Application for Mitchell D. Lovey, owner of Burning Tree Cellars, located at 1040 North Main Street. Item number four, Special Event Liquor License Application for the Verdi Valley Fair Association for an event scheduled for August 11th, 2012, at the Verdi Valley Fairgrounds, located at 800 East Cherry Street. Are there any items that the council would like to pull for discussion? Okay. Are there any items that the public would like to pull for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Pratt?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Alinsky seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, New Business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one, Presentation from Kristy Statler, Executive Director for the Arizona State Parks Foundation, regarding the National Resources Protection Act Initiative. Excuse me. We had a correction here. This is regarding the Arizona Natural Resources Act?
Protection.
Protection Act Initiative. Okay. I almost have that memorized. So, if you'd like to come up, Ms. Statler?
Thank you very much. Oh, magic. Mayor Jones, members of the council, staff, and guests, hello, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about Arizona's natural resources, and specifically, the campaign, Citizens to Save Arizona's Natural Resources, which is a campaign to put an initiative, a citizen's initiative, on the November ballot. The initiative is the Arizona Natural Resources Protection Act. I have the magic of technology coming on. This act is designed, in this centennial year, to really create a legacy for Arizonans, to permanently voter-protect opportunities for current and future generations to enjoy Arizona's parks, natural resources, and outdoor recreation. That is our mission statement for this campaign. What are our natural resources? I don't have to tell you, folks, what are our natural resources. You are surrounded by them. We have to remind folks, where I live, oh dear. We have to remind folks in Maricopa County, oftentimes, what our natural resources are really all about. They're not, bingo, thank you. Outdoor learning environments, these are outside schoolrooms. Historic parks, cultural heritage locations, recreational parks, one of which you have in your backyard, Dead Horse Ranch State Park. Conservation areas, the Greenway. Economic contributors, we benefit our Arizona communities, counties, the state, benefit from the economic impacts that are created by our state parks and other cultural, natural resources. Places that promote mental and physical health. Every time I go to Dead Horse Ranch State Park, I feel better. Trails, watershed protection, a critical aspect of natural resource protection, invasive species management, wildlife and wildlife education. I'm going to move on to this particular slide because this has a very special place in the initiative. State parks are really at the heart of this initiative campaign. For five years, I was one of four Assistant Directors of the Arizona State Park System, left there in 2009 to manage full-time the nonprofit partner to the state park system, the Arizona State Parks Foundation. The foundation is an advocate, and full-time nonprofit partner to our state park system. We have three goals in the foundation. We function to build friends groups, advocate for state parks, and fundraise to create new ways for the state, for the public, to enjoy the state park system. Among the affiliates, chapters of the foundation are the Friends of the Verdi River Greenway, a very unique and active network of volunteers who are actively collaborating with multiple partners to eradicate invasive species, secure in-stream flow, and they have qualified for more than $720,000 in grant funds within the last eight months. These are volunteers, and now, this project is engaging economic prosperity because they're hiring local contractors to do the work that's connected to these grants. Friends of the Verdi River Greenway are a vibrant organization, are taking the lead, as many friends groups are doing in different parts of the state, for our state parks and state park system. The state park system, unfortunately, is at a financial breaking point. While I can point to more than $15 million in sweeps of earned revenue, gate fees, gift shop proceeds, donations, and reservation surcharge funds, I can also highlight more than $81 million in sweeps in the last 10 years, from funds that support your state park system. This has brought us to the brink. However, partners like Yavapai County, the town of Camp Verdi, all the communities in the Verdi Valley stepped up to help meet the operating deficits of a number of state parks before 23 parks were slated for closure. That is what you call operating on dental floss. Those are not full-time, sustainable fixes for the state park system. A system that creates $266 million annually in economic impact, and 3,000 jobs in Arizona. It's just flabbergasting to me when you hear legislators and leadership talk about wanting to create jobs while they defund the state park system that sustains communities and jobs. Tourism, I don't have to tell you all, but many don't understand the thorough impact of economic impacts of visitation to state parks. When tourists come, $2 million, excuse me, 2 million visitors annually, starting, at least, we know that to be the fact in 2007, 2008, and 2009. The figures from 2010 and '11 have dwindled some, but we know that a million of those 2 million visitors are from out of state. State parks attract visitors from out of state and out of the country. Those people come and spend money at restaurants, stay in hotels, they buy gas, they buy fishing equipment, they buy rafting gear and camping equipment, they buy picnic supplies at the grocery stores, and they contribute to the sales tax, more than $23.5 million in local and state taxes annually. Yet, the state park system receives zero general fund dollars. We're, again, at the breaking point. The ballot measure is a response to this defunding of the park system. This is the 100 words of the ballot measure, and there are four aspects in this 100 words, four impacts. Provides school children free access to state parks when they're part of a school group. What mom and teacher isn't crazy about that notion? These are outdoor classrooms, and we find that when we bring children to parks and teach them about the natural resource that's in their backyard, they bring their families. We see repeat visitation, we see engaged families in community and natural resources. It also, the initiative also voter-protects all funds that sustain the... It also, the initiative also voter-protects all funds that sustain the state park system and the Arizona Game and Fish Department's $10 million annual Heritage Fund allocation. As you may recall, the Heritage Fund allocation, their $10 million of the Heritage Fund was eliminated from the statute three years ago now. That was a grant-making program that enabled the development of parks, historic restoration, watershed protection, all sorts, trail management and development and maintenance. It was a heartbreak to see that Heritage Fund eliminated. It was approved by voters in 1992, but that was prior to the Voter Protection Act. The funds were not voter-protected. They were swept from state parks. We fear that they may be swept from the Game and Fish Department. That's at least 81 jobs and a huge number of programs within the Game and Fish Department. It reestablishes the $10 million grant program for heritage fund-like grant activity. It guarantees that the first $10 million collected from the new revenue stream is to this grant program, $4 million of which is restricted to cities and towns throughout Arizona. So, there's a fighting chance for grant programs among all Arizona cities and towns. Lastly, the final aspect of the measure of the 100 words is the funding stream. It is a $14 per non-commercial vehicle donation that would appear on a vehicle registration invoice. We can qualify this as a donation because it's an opt-out program, not an opt-in, but an opt-out program. $14 will appear on your invoice should this pass in November, and $14 annually would fund the Arizona Natural Resources Protection Fund. 27 cents a week. Would you pay that for your Greenway and Dead Horse Ranch State Park, Fort Verde, the Douglas Mansion? We did our homework. Polling indicates that informed voters will approve this on November, in November of 12 by over 60 percent. Polling was conducted by a nationally highly credible polling institution. They are specialized in natural resources ballot measures. 504 likely voters in April were polled with a margin of plus or minus of 4.4 percent. And the original, the initial response was positive 60 percent, 59 percent actually, without any arguments, without building a case whatsoever. On the face of the language of the 100 words, 59 percent said yes, 33 percent said no. After the pro-con arguments, the margin grew. 70 percent says definitely, probably, or at least a little, yes. And the negative total became reduced by 6 percent. We have a challenge. We have nearly 100,000 signatures at this juncture, must have a minimum of 172,800 Arizona confirmed signatures by July 5th, actually. We have about two and a half weeks to get there. It is yeoman's work. We have some paid signature gatherers, but I must tell you that the large majority of this work is being conducted by volunteers like your mayor, working hard to get us over this formidable challenge. This campaign is conducted by a broad bipartisan group of Arizonans. We'd like a lot of members to this campaign. We continue to seek that kind of support as well as community endorsement, a vocal support of this measure that benefits your community and all Arizonans. And that's what we seek. Support by communities, organizations all over the state. We have many that include the Nature Conservancy, the Arizona State Parks Board, the Arizona Parks and Rec Association, Arizona State Parks Foundation. We have numerous others, but those are, Valley Forward will be voting tomorrow morning on this initiative to endorse it. There are many that are standing behind this effort and supporting your state park system and all of Arizona's natural resources. I'm completed, I've completed my presentation. I'll be happy to respond to any questions, comments.
Mr. Pratt?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment. I knew I'd get to say this at least once tonight. I didn't think I'd get to say it so soon. This is obviously a no-brainer for us to support. Our state parks are so incredibly important. I think you make a great case about not just the recreation, preserving open space, but also the economic impact on counties and towns. I know how many people go to Dead Horse State Park from out of town and spend money here.
Yes, sir.
And all we're doing, if we approve this tonight, oh no, we're not on that, but if we, when it comes out, if we approve it, alls we're doing is saying, let's put it out to the voters, which is
Precisely.
The idea of a democracy.
Precisely.
Let the voters decide. So, yeah, I appreciate your presentation. I think it's incredibly important, and I think you covered some really important points, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you very much.
As we all know, we have, we actually have five state parks in the Verde Valley. If you count, if you count Slide Rock, which is in Oak Creek Canyon, but if you, you can add a sixth park actually, because the Verde River Greenway, now, it used to be six miles, a lot of it in, near the city of Cottonwood, but now it's been extended down to Beasley Flat, and it's 36 miles.
It's a 36-mile linear park.
And we have the Rocking River
Rocking River Ranch.
Rocking River piece of property that was purchased by state parks before things kind of imploded, and that, I guess there were dreams of creating a state park there, but there's no resources now to do anything with it.
Much of the value of that park as well was the grandfather water rights that came to the park system with that purchase through the Nature Conservancy and makes state parks a stakeholder in the river.
Right. So, any comments, Mr. Ilinski?
You say that when the people that you polled learned the pros and cons, that they changed their vote by a pretty substantial margin. What were some of the cons that they learned about?
I must tell you, I did not conduct the polling, and I have good feedback. The highest, the most interesting thing to me was, the highest item that polled in the initiative is getting school kids into parks, state parks for free. I was thrilled to see voters recognizing education in parks as such a critical aspect of this initiative measure, and that that polled the highest was quite telling.
Do you have anything to comment on what some of the cons were? What do you think some of the
Oh, what some of the cons were? Certainly, those who would identify this as a tax, you know, regardless of the pro-con argument of the, it is an optional contribution because it is an opt-out program. But that certainly was, you know, you're going to put it on my bill, I may not remember to opt out. Well, that's due diligence on all, every citizen's part.
I think some of those kinds of same cons were discussed by the legislature, I think a couple of years ago. We were really trying to attain some kind of funding for parks through the same kind of thing, a license plate tax, but the legislature just said no. They wouldn't even consider it.
It never saw the light of day.
Right.
It was not heard in committee.
And this wouldn't have been an opt-out, though.
No.
They were talking about it, and they were talking about $8, weren't they? Was it eight?
It was. It was a $9 fee, and at that juncture, it was a mandatory fee. And the whole point was, there was a quid pro quo. If you, when you paid your $9 per non-commercial
You got in free.
Vehicle, you got in every state park for free for the year. So, it was a trade-off. The, the, the trade-off here, unfortunately, we cannot determine what level of participation we will have in an opt-out program. While we recognize that 60 percent of informed voters may support this, we've done our homework in some comparative studies around the country with programs that are similar to this. There is nothing that is identical to each other anywhere in the country, and this kind of program is established in Michigan, Montana and Washington State. None of them are alike, and none of them are like this. So, what we anticipate is a 60 percent participation rate. At that level, we can generate 30 to 40 million dollars, the first 10 million of which goes to the grant program, the rest of which goes to begin to address a more than $200 million capital and deferred maintenance backlog within the state park system. This defunding has long-term effects. You saw the result at the Douglas Mansion. For lack of a few thousand dollars to deal with a leakage issue, the Adobe Building deteriorated underneath our eyes, right beneath our eyes. The same thing happened to the Logotonto Natural Bridge State Park. But then, when we had to close the facility, the community is outraged, we're outraged, but no money, no capital money to resolve this issue. This new fund creates some flexibility for the State Parks Board to address that capital needs issue.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think, again, the important point here is tonight, whether you agree with the initiative or not, I happen to, so I'm a little biased, I think it's a great initiative, is, again, all we're going to be doing is saying, we are a democracy, let the democratic process work, and if we approve having this put on the ballot, all we're doing is saying yes to democracy.
Correct.
And again, I'm biased and think it's a great initiative, but even if you're against it, you should want all the people in the state to have a choice to vote on it.
We'd appreciate that.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Howdige?
I have a question for you. So, these funds are protected from being swept from the state?
They would be voter-protected if they were approved, if this initiative was approved on the November ballot. If we get the signatures that are required to put it on the ballot, and it appears in November on the ballot, and voters approve this, then it is voter-protected by Prop 105, the Voter Protection Act.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure
Yes, sir. Yes, they would be voter-protected funds.
Go through this and have the state come in and sweep these funds again at their pleasure. And with that in mind, is it time to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Howdige, please.
Because I'd like to make the motion, if I may.
Please.
I have moved to approve Resolution Number 2643, supporting the placement of the Arizona National Resources Protection Act Initiative on the ballot of the November 2012 election.
Second.
Okay, so, Councilmember Howdige made the motion, Councilmember Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Pardon?
Thank you for your presentation.
And we haven't all said, did we all say aye? Oh, okay. I didn't ask the public if they wanted to comment, and I would like to give the public an opportunity if anyone does want to comment.
I'd just like to say thank you again for the opportunity to be before you tonight. I appreciate this very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for helping us understand the issue better. Is there anyone from the public who wants to comment? Okay, and so I guess we all said aye. So, Mr. Howdige made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it, and it was passed unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. Yes, it's a resolution. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2643 by title only.
Resolution Number 2643, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, supporting the Arizona Natural Resources Protection Act Initiative. Madam Mayor.
Okay, and Ms. Statler, who, once the resolution is signed and ready to go out, where would the city clerk send that? Would you contact her and let her know where to send that?
Of course, I'd be happy to. I'd like to see it go to the
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, item number three, Resolutions Number 2644 and 2645, appointing members to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Little.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Recently, with the departure of two Parks and Recreation Commissioners, Mr. Ron Hollis and Dennis Burke, the commission currently has two seats that are open right now. We advertised through Human Resources for about five weeks, and fortunately, you guys all know, when it comes to boards and commissions, sometimes people will apply, other times they don't, and in this case, we had four applicants apply for two open seats. The applicants are Cynthia Burton, Albert Hilberger, John Lupo and C. Hall Stoddard, and all other applications can be found in your guys' packets. If council desires to approve this item, the motions are, of course, outlined in your council communication documents. It's Numbers 2644, to your term expiring August 16, 2013, and Resolution 2645, expiring January 5, 2014. At this time, Anne was saying, I haven't met Mr. Stoddard or Cindy Burton. I don't know if they're here in the audience, but if they are, Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you, because I know typically you like to ask them some questions or let them speak for a few minutes.
Okay. I would ask the council, are there any specific questions that you would like to ask the applicants?
No, I really think
Mr. Pratt?
A lot of what the information we need is answered in the applications. I'd probably just like to hear why they would like to serve on the commission.
Okay, does that work for everyone? All right, if the applicants who are here tonight, starting, we'll just go in alphabetical order, starting with Cynthia Burton, would come up to the lectern and share with the council and the public why you would like to serve and how you think you could do that.
Hi, I'm Cindy Burton. I've been here for nine years in Cottonwood. I pretty much frequent parks around here every morning, and a lot of times in the evening, taking my dog out and going four-wheeling. I'm disabled, I need something to do, and I wanted to get involved in my community, and Parks and Recreation, ever since I was a child, has always been really important to get out and get activity. I think it's important for anybody. I just want to get involved with my community.
Thank you, that's great. Okay, Albert Hilberger?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Clerk. That covered all. My name's Al Hilberger. I've had 50 years plus of construction experience, mostly all management. The reason I'd like to serve, I know it's a volunteer position, but I feel that you really have to pay attention to what's best for the public as well as what's best for the city of Cottonwood. There's always budgetary considerations, there's never typically enough money in every situation like that, but you basically establish priorities and then list them and then deal with them one at a time. So, I volunteered at Verde Valley Medical Center, I'm currently a volunteer at the Recreation Center. I enjoy serving, so I'd be honored to be part of the commission.
Thank you for your comments. John Lupo?
Good evening, Mayor Jones and councilmembers. My name is John Lupo. I've been a resident of Verde Valley for 15 years. I've lived in Sedona, Cottonwood, Jerome, a little bit in Flagstaff. I like to build, I like to participate, I like to be involved in the community. I don't know if you've seen my resume or not, but there's been a lot of things I've been involved with. When I first moved here in 96, I was the Parks and Recreation Director for the town of Clarkdale and helped start like the concerts in the park, which are still going on today. I helped build a Sedona Dog Park, I helped build a Sedona Teen Center, I helped build the skate park in Sedona. I've been involved in many things, such as president of Kiwanis, treasurer of Kiwanis. I was on Rotary for a short period of time. I've worked with many nonprofits like the Boys and Girls Club, I've been a volunteer for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, former firefighter, EMT. I've got a lot of energy, I've got a degree in Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services. Even though I'm not in that field right now, I'm still, excuse me, still in the environmental field, and just want to bring this experience and energy to Cottonwood and get connected, stay involved and help Parks and Rec. stay involved, and help Parks and Rec become a stronger department.
Thank you very much. Questions by the council for any, oh, excuse me, Mr. Stoddard? Is Mr. Stoddard here? And Mr. Stoddard was invited and aware of the meeting. Okay, Mr. Pratt?
I just have a comment, and I don't know if it's appropriate to make a motion along with my comment, but when I saw the names of the people that applied, I again just said, "Wow, we really have quality people in Cottonwood willing to step up." And there was one that really stood out to me, I had never met the person, I didn't know what he looked like, but I knew him by reputation, I knew he had done some work with Parks and Rec, and I just think he'd be a great member of the commission. And if it's okay to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion on that person.
Sure, are there any comments from the public? Okay, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2645, appointing Al Hilberger to fill the remainder of a three-year term which expires January 5, 2014.
Second, I thought he was, I agree, he was an excellent candidate. So Mr. Pratt made the motion, the mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2645. Okay, so which resolution are you appointing him for?
Twenty-six forty-five.
Okay, please read Resolution Number 2645 by title only.
Resolution Number 2645, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Al Hilberger, a member of the City of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing his term of office. And just for the record, that's to fill the remainder of a three-year term which expires January 5, 2014.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, on the second resolution, well, actually, it was the first resolution, Number 2644, a council discussion on that item.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Howdegie?
I, first of all, I liked all our candidates here, but I guess I was struck by Cynthia Burton's application here, who simply states she has a desire to get involved with the Parks and Rec and with her community. Obviously, a very, very short and understated resume, but that kind of struck me as the type of person who would work well with the Parks and Rec Commission. And not to say that our other applicants are not outstanding, they are, they have great resumes, but I kind of like the idea that this person just simply wants to get involved, which is the reason to have these volunteer positions, and which is the way that I got involved way back in the day when Joe Jones was mayor, you know, just simply wanted to get involved with the community. And if I may, I'd like to make a motion to...
Certainly, so, is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this item before the motion is made? Oh, Mr. Howdegie, please go forward.
Just to say that I would like to make a motion to appoint Cynthia Burton to Parks and Rec Commission, and that would be for Resolution Number 644.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Howdegie made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. I'd just like to say that we'll keep your, you just never know what happens, because we thought we had, last time we chose, we had extra folks that applied, and who would have ever thought that we'd lose two as soon as we did? So Iris Dobler will keep the applications for Mr. Lupo and Stoddard on file for six months, so if another opportunity comes up, we may be able to appoint others. And I agree with Councilmember Howdegie, back in nineteen eighty-something, late eighties, I saw an ad in the paper, I worked at the Verde Valley Manor at the time, I think, and asking for someone to serve on planning and zoning. And I didn't know a thing about it, but I wanted to serve my community, and I applied, and I was actually chosen for it, and it was a great experience for me, and I'm hoping that I did some good service for the community. I know I studied hard every month, and so, congratulations for those chosen, and for those not, we'll keep your applications on file, and thank you for applying.
Just to note, Ms. Mayor...
That's Mr. Howdegie?
Mr. Mitch Metzger still remembers you being in that commission, so...
Yes, Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
He was a great guy, he took me under his wing, and he had me over to his house, and he and his wife whined and dined me, and he taught, he got the book out, and he said, "You will go and you will look, you will physically go to every item on the agenda and look at it before the meeting." And I'm like, "Okay." So he was, he was a great leader, a great educator, so, very much appreciated. Those were the days, huh? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item, oh, resolution, okay, City Clerk, please read Resolution 2644 by title only.
Resolution Number 2644, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Cynthia Burton, a member of the City of Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing her term of office. And for the record, this is an appointment to fill the remainder of a two-year term which expires August 16, 2013.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of the City's Tentative Budget for Fiscal Year 2012-2013. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, council, every year about this time, we get together to go ahead and have our public hearing, and this is on the tentative budget. We do this for the tentative and for the final budget. As you know, we've had three kind of long meetings to discuss the detail and details of the budget. So with that being said, I'd like to allow, if council doesn't mind us allowing us some time to allow the public to maybe comment on the budget before we actually do the adoption of the tentative budget.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to open up a public hearing regarding adoption of the city's tentative budget for fiscal year 2012-2013. I would like to invite the public, anyone in the public, to speak on this item. I have a couple of commenters already, but if there's anyone who hasn't signed a form who would like to speak, the forms are available right in the back, so please do comment if you would like. Let's see, Budget Number Five, Mr. Oliphant would like to speak.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Clerk, staff, Bob Oliphant, 330 Desperado Drive, Cottonwood, Arizona. I want to address only an item that's found on page 277 of the proposed budget. This is the completion of the radio-read water meters in Cottonwood Ranch. I want to especially thank the City Manager, Doug Bartosz, for the information that he has supplied me. I greatly appreciate that, Mr. Bartosz. I also want to thank Mr. Ilinski for publicly bringing this issue forward during the work session, so the public was aware of it. This is my concern. The city does not have a comprehensive water meter replacement public policy. Most cities do have such a public policy. A comprehensive water meter replacement public policy sets forth a criteria that guides staff in implementing the replacement policy. This makes the replacement of a water meter objective, rather than the subjective decision based on a well-meaning member of the staff. It places the decision where it should be, with the government representatives to wit the City Council. Unfortunately, because Cottonwood has no such policy, the decisions about replacement of water meters are left to staff with no specific direction. My judgment, this is not appropriate. Second, I have a concern about the funds that are needed to complete this project. Best information I have been able to obtain is that a water meter costs the city about eighty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. I obtained this from the April 2007 City Council meeting, where a 10 percent increase was approved by the council from a price of seventy-four ninety-eight. My estimate is it takes about twenty dollars of city time and effort to install a new meter. In Cottonwood Ranch, there are approximately 525 homes. What this means is that each home will cost the city about a hundred dollars. Overall, the project will cost about fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars for Cottonwood Ranch alone. What about the remaining 94 percent of water users? The city provides water to somewhere between eight thousand and more than eight thousand now, especially when Pine Shadows has been added. You take just the eight thousand conservative figure as the project objective, it's going to cost the city about eight hundred thousand dollars to carry forward this project. Liberal estimate would put it closer to a million dollars. Where will the city get this kind of money? It would simply raise water rates to accomplish it. I don't believe the council in 2005, when they approved the purchase of these meters, or the council in 2007, which approved an increase in the cost, intended any such project. Nothing about this project is mentioned in the 2000 minutes. Third is a perception, only a perception, but implementation of this particular project could be viewed by some as discriminatory. Obviously, the Water Department intends to recoup more than fifty thousand dollars in new revenue from 525 homeowners. Otherwise, they wouldn't be replacing the water meters. But if the city can't carry out a comprehensive program, what will be left is just Cottonwood Ranch paying an extra, we'll assume, fifty thousand dollars, simply because there's not a public policy replacement meter criteria in effect. Finally, at least from my perspective, the Water Department has not produced sufficient information about whether Cottonwood Ranch water meters are functioning adequately or not. We speculate, and most will agree, that water meters, over time, do slow down, lime and other kinds of things get into them, and they no longer are reporting accurately. But the age of the water meter is very important. The water meters in Cottonwood Ranch appear to be among the very newest water meters in the city. It seems odd that the city would select these meters and not other meters in the city that are much older, obviously much more flawed. Anyway, this may be a waste of taxpayer money, it may be unfair, it can be perceived as discriminatory. I therefore ask that the council table this particular item until it can create a rational water meter replacement policy that is objective, fair to all the citizens in the city of Cottonwood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, the next speaker is Darryl Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Darryl Smith, 2335 West Desert Willow Drive, Cottonwood. The only item I've just, on page 271, it's in the budget highlights there, and it says the budget includes 3.6 million for beginning construction on a riverfront reclamation plant. I'm curious, when is the citizens of Cottonwood ever going to be able to see something on this, a design on it, anything like that, before construction? We have never been shown even a, anything on it. We've already spent, apparently, a million dollars on the plans, but here, this says you're going to spend the beginning construction, and has anybody even seen anything on it other than the plant? I'm curious. I've never, and I've watched pretty closely, to see if we're ever going to see something on it. So before you vote on it, I'd appreciate an opportunity to see exactly how it is, comment it, and I think the citizens, this thing is going to cost, what, eight million dollars? I think the citizens have a right to take a look before they vote on it. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Any responses by staff? Do you have any?
I can respond to the last one. We're close to 30 percent design, and staff is getting ready to meet with the designers at that point, and once we approve the 30 percent design, it'll move much quicker, and at that point, we'll be able to get something that's meaningful out to the citizens to see, and as the council's aware, we are planning on, you know, a couple of different community meetings and...
And was it, you were just talking about one recently, I thought, about a date or something, or a sort of a...
I don't think we've identified a date, but we're anticipating sometime this summer, probably August, and we'll bring it to the council first and share the plans with the council initially, which, again, will be a community meeting, and then begin the process from there in terms of the community meetings. I think it's also important to advise the council that even though you haven't seen the plans, this is simply a planning document, the budget, and so that you approve the funding for the continuation of this project doesn't necessarily mean that it, that we need to spend...
That it will be spent.
Yeah.
But because it's the budget, we just have to...
We've got to have the spending.
Have a place mark for it, or in case we need it. Okay, so, are there any other comments by members of the public? Mr. Pratt?
I have a quick question, I was looking for this here, and I wish Dan Luder was here, and this may have been answered. I would agree with Mr. Oliphant's comments, that it does seem odd that some of the newest meters in the city are the ones targeted for this replacement, and maybe I missed the answer there, but...
And actually, the responses I sent to Mr. Oliphant, I shared with the council as well, and the reason, this is not a maintenance project, this is an operational project, where we're moving to meters that can be radio-read...
Right.
Meaning that we cut down on the number of staff that are required to read the meters every month. The reason we started in Cottonwood Ranch is their meters are very close together, they're very accessible, they're easy to reach, and certainly the intention is to outfit the entire city with these new meters as we move along, but that's the only reason that Cottonwood Ranch has been, you know, initially worked on.
And I guess I did read that and maybe missed that part of it, because you did send those emails to us, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Ilinski?
I believe, and I don't want to put words in Dan's mouth, but I believe what he was saying is that, starting in Cottonwood Ranch, because it's a neighborhood that was built consistently, and I think it's a very simple process to change them out, they can kind of get their feet wet working on that neighborhood first. And just, I recently changed out my meter. I live in Old Town, my bill went way up because I had a very old meter, so I think it would be discriminatory to start in Old Town. I don't think that Cottonwood Ranch is going to be discriminated against in any way, shape, or form at this point, because they're fairly newer meters. I don't suspect they're going to, you know...
Yeah, they're not going to see the variation that, like you said, some of the real old meters probably have slowed down.
Mine definitely did slow down. It was a very ancient, ancient meter.
We appreciate the...
So you were getting cheap water?
I was getting cheap water, and it felt good.
And didn't even know it.
I'd like to opt out right now, and I don't need a new meter in my place. I'll be fine. There's another one, too. We're good.
Okay, so if there are no more comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close the floor to the public, and the council can go ahead and make comments.
I just had a couple on there. Regarding the mention of Pine Shadows, if I'm not mistaken... Regarding the mention of Pine Shadows, if I'm not mistaken, the entire, that entire thing only has two meters. Am I right?
Yeah, I don't know if you would describe it as two meters.
Well, it's a high and low flow.
It's, yeah, high and low flow.
We don't have individual meters in that area, so we don't have, you know, that doesn't really tie in there directly. And I think that to, I'm trying to get the idea that I don't know if there's going to be a penalty upon the people who get the new meter, so much so as perhaps, there was a mention there that there would have to be $50,000 in new revenue from the meter to pay for the old, you know, to pay for the switch, whereas some of that revenue may come from cost savings on the reading, you know, that way. And I don't know that any one particular area is going to be penalized with an increase in rates just to cover their meter, whereas it would be more spread out around, you know, I don't know the specifics, but I don't imagine, I just don't want to see a headline that says, you know, "Cottonwood Ranch charged $50,000 extra for water," or something like that. But I don't imagine that would be the case. And then, yeah, I'm trying to think if that was all I had to cover there. I guess that would be it. Then regarding replacing of them, I could see where in a more standardized area, it would be easier to do, but, you know, I'm sure there's some plan along the, as new things come in and out, there must be a plan for that. And it would be a good idea to have at least a stated rule saying, here's how, here's when we replace meters.
Right.
I understand that, too.
And we can certainly look in to see what other cities have in the way of a policy. I don't think the council wants to get into determining what meters should be replaced, but we do have a standard practice for when and how we replace meters when there's concern about the accuracy of the meter. And we also have a standard procedure in terms of how that's tested and so...
Because I'm not sure I would have approved...
But we can certainly codify that or put that in.
I don't think I would have approved Mr. Olinsky's meter change.
Thank you.
I'm only kidding. I don't think we need to approve every meter.
No, no, but I think it was a good idea. He changed his meter. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
We should all be paying a fair price for water, even if it were my meter and my bill went up. If that's the fair price and that's what I'm using, I'm okay with that.
That's right.
I think the other important thing to state is, you know, there's a lot of improvements we're making to the system.
We are.
And as rapidly as we would like to change out the meters, you know, with the number of staff we have, we have to, you know, budget money to make the replacements that we can actually do in a year. So we'll get to everybody eventually, with the exception of maybe Councilmember Harteke, but...
Vice Mayor?
But we will get there.
Are these meters, new meters, are they above ground, or are they ones that are going to get down?
And like those little box, little blocks, box places?
Yeah, but again, it probably depends.
So how does...
Who built the house.
When they drive by with their little magnetic reader, it's just radio waves then. They don't actually have to, kind of like getting Wi-Fi on my computer.
No, and I'm not, I'm not exactly well-versed on all the technology and...
But they just have to drive by, and I think, well, APS isn't doing that yet, but eventually...
As opposed to getting out of the car, having to, you know, find the meter, you know...
Open the box. That would save a lot of time, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And again, a lot of staffing time, which, you know, means that we don't have to hire as many people. And certainly, as new development occurs, we'll try to get these meters, make sure these meters are in.
Right.
So we don't have to...
Absolutely. So any new subdivisions that might come our way will just automatically have this kind of meter where staff doesn't have to spend as much time going door to door essentially. Okay. Okay, so what we have here is, okay, so we had our public hearing. The next is number five, adoption of the city's tentative budget and expenditure limitation for fiscal year 2012-13. And reading over the materials, does council have questions? I have a lot of highlighted information. I think that the key issues was, was an excellent synopsis of the budget. We have slow recovery of the local economy, taxes, state shared revenues, general staffing and compensation. Talks about the REC Center, capital infrastructure planning, water issues, wastewater issues. And of course, we spent, I don't know how many nights here and a day, going over the budget in great detail, pretty much line by line. So, Mr. Pratt?
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2013 tentative budget and establish the city's fiscal year 2013 expenditure limitation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Pratt made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. Rodriguez, we would like to thank you and your staff for a lot of hard work and...
But there's like 300 pages.
431 words.
Oh, yes, please, please comment.
I just wanted to, just for the public record, the tentative budget, of course, is at $73,430,000. It's about $10 million above our revised budget. And there's, I just want to read off the listings of things that you're actually approving right off the bat. You'll be approving the funding of the city's merit program. You're approving the frozen positions that were discussed during the work-study sessions. There were no individual reclassifications or salary adjustments as discussed during the work-study sessions. Several temporary positions were made permanent in the fire department, as you may recall as our own tenants. There will, we've implemented, we're starting to compile the compensation study to be implemented and retro back to July 1st. We'll continue the present employee contribution for dependent coverage on our health insurance part. You are giving us permission to purchase budgeted equipment. As tradition with the city of Cottonwood, we'll be delaying a lot of it till after about January 1st to make sure our revenues are coming in appropriately. You'll also approve the acquisition, planning, and or construction budgeted capital of projects using established guidelines, and many of those projects will still end up on the council's agenda as they come forward. You're also accepting expenditures as noted in the budget document as presented and discussed during the budget workshops. And this is a balanced budget as it is, as it has been in all years under the Florida Arizona State statute. Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you very much for that update for those who didn't spend time with us during the process. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item is request for a purchasing exemption under Section 6, Paragraph C of the city's procurement code to purchase Route Match Paratransit Management System software, training, and support for the transit department. And let me get over there, Mr. Rodriguez.
I'm getting used to that "I" annotate you, you mention, so give me just a second.
Okay, yeah, it's like, you hear me say, "Let me get there."
Give me just a second, but it works out really...
Isn't it a great program?
It really does work out nicely.
Yes.
Here, council, as you know, the transition from NATA to the GAD link system here in Cottonwood is coming, moving really quick for us at this point in time. We have our transit manager, Bruce Morrow, here, back there. We got Richard here. And the reason I took this project on is because, of course, it was purchasing, and we wanted to make sure that we brought it before council. One of the issues we're having, obviously, is we're, part of the transition requires movement of data, which is critical for the transit system. In the past, we didn't, we didn't track it when Cat was in, solely supported by the city of Cottonwood and its partners before we made that. We didn't keep a lot of this data. Our concern is that they've accrued a lot of data, mileage, pickups, ridership information, so forth. And we would like to not lose or have any lapse in the time that we would go through a 45, 60, 90-day purchasing procedure. There is a policy in our procurement manual that says that we can request an exemption from this, from our purchasing policy, provided we can bring it to council and there is a reason for it being requested. Of course, one is, we're up against a timeline, and we need it to be taken care of expediously. Expedient, quick. How's that? Get my tongue done. The programs, we looked at three different programs. Route Match was one, Canova's Trapeze, which NATA is currently using, and Stretchin'. And as always, we looked at Route Match simply because it was considerably less than the other two programs. Bruce has gone through it, and I, and it's obviously something he's comfortable with. He's worked with it in the past. Please correct me if I'm wrong, okay? And we would, we, as tradition with the city of Cottonwood, we don't spend for stuff that we really don't need. And he's comfortable with the Route Match program. We did contact the state, and they were, there are federal guidelines for acquiring any kind of equipment or software and such. They've supported us very strongly since we decided to make this move, and they've agreed that they would support us in getting the $25,000 or so reimbursed back from the state on this project. Because it is a, because it is the city of Cottonwood, this is probably not a cost we'll, we'll be asking for any matching funds from Sedona, so we'll be having to come up with a match for this particular program as we decided when we brought on our transit manager. And one of the reasons we decided to do that was to make sure that this was as smooth and as seamless as possible, and there would not be any interruption to our citizens. And we're hoping that that will transpire. The exemption is noted on the second page of that council communication, waiver by city council. The city council may waive any provision or requirement of this procurement policy upon the finding that doing so is in the best interest of the city. Circumstances justifying waiver include, but are not limited to, situations in which timing expediency is critical, special and unique qualifications of an individual, firm, vendor, or items, the procurement of additional goods and services under this existing, under an existing contract to comply with specific requirements of a gift or agreement. And basically, with, our concern is, of course, the rapidly approaching time when we're actually going to do the transition from NATA and Cat, we graciously request that the council allow us the exemption of the, under this provision.
Questions, council? Mr. Olinsky?
I'm comfortable with it as long as the staff is. I mean, obviously, I wish we'd had more time to research it, but if you're comfortable with it, then I would trust your judgment. You are comfortable with it?
I do do have a number of other operations, so it does, and it will grow as we grow, which is another good thing. I'm very comfortable with the software, and the staff will not have...
You want to, you want to come up because...
It's starting to get longer.
Yeah, the public won't, public won't be able to hear you, and the recorder won't be able to record you, so...
Okay.
Transcribe you.
Like I was saying, I'm very comfortable with the software. It's something I've used in the past. The staff will find it very similar to what they're currently using, so the training issue will be minimized. There's going to be a few things that are different, but mostly, it's going to look and feel the same as what they're currently using. And it's just something that I feel that we need in order to maintain the service levels that we currently have.
Okay. Councilmember Norman?
So we're looking at maybe 10 to 12 days before the end of the month and before the system is ours. Can this be installed and going by that time?
No. I can commit to them, well, I've got a commitment from Route Match, if this is okay, that they can get it done in about three weeks. So we'll have a little rough go at the beginning, but it shouldn't be too much of a problem to overcome.
Well, it sounds to me like it's something that's just necessary. I mean, you can't really do without it, and it would have been nice if we could have gotten it a little bit earlier, too. So I think it's a big no-brainer.
I like that phrase.
Needed. Do you feel like I'm a copycat or something?
No, that's, that's a compliment.
Yes, please, Councilmember Norman?
I move to approve the request for purchase, for a purchasing exemption under Section 6, Paragraph C of the procurement code to purchase Route Match TS Paratransit Management System software, training, and support services for the transit department as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Norman made the motion. Councilmember Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any comments from our audience? All right, item number seven, approval of an agreement with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce to receive the city's special excise tax receipts to be used for the promotion, development, and enhancement of tourism and economic development for the city of Cottonwood. Yes, Vice Mayor?
I need to recuse myself.
She's recusing herself. And yes, Councilmember Pratt?
I need to recuse myself.
Okay, we have two members who are recusing themselves because they're directly associated with the Chamber of Commerce. So we still have a quorum to do business. And we're there. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, council, this is, this is for the approval of a three-year contract with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. This contract actually lapsed in 2011. It was an oversight on our part. What we've basically done is put the contract back, brought it back to council again for another three years through 2015. Basically, what it says is we're going to give them all of our sale, bed tax, not our sales tax, our bed tax. It will just be a pass-through. Comes to us, we get the amount, turn around, and give it to the Chamber of Commerce. They usually get it on a monthly basis, usually towards the end of the month for the previous month. They have, of course, some requirements that they, that they have to provide for us, year end statement, quarterly reports. I need to get on them to make sure that they submit those reports on a timely basis. And outside of that, they're supposed to use all of it with the exception of 15% that goes to the CEDC for economic development. The remainder goes to their operations. With that being said, I would like any questions?
I think that's very important, too, that really is a shot in the arm for the economic development. They really count on those funds to do the work that they do. So it really, there's two good things. The chamber gets funding, and then the CEDC gets funding also. So hopefully, it'll get better, the economy, because that makes a difference for them, too.
Right.
And yes, definitely, their reports have to be turned in, or they don't get the funding. Is that correct? That's all, everyone we fund has that rule.
Well, not everyone we fund, but most of the bigger agencies that we do fund. We also fund such things as the Birding Festival.
Right.
Stuff like those. Those are all relatively small, so we don't deal with them. This one is about $200,000 or so a year. We'll need to require that they go ahead and provide their reporting on a regular basis.
Any questions from the council or comments on this item? Any comments from the public? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I will, I will...
For Delling?
I'll move that we approve the new three-year contract with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce.
Second, Mr. Delling made the motion. The mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item is Resolution Number 2646, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mingus Union High School District for the use of the city's outdoor aquatic center.
Honorable Mayor and Councilman...
Mr. Fest?
Yes.
Mr. Faust?
Yes. Hope everyone is doing well tonight. In your, your packet of information tonight is, we've been working on this, actually, Rudy Rodriguez and Jason Little and myself, along with the high school, with the superintendent, the principal, as well as the, the budget finance director for the high school for almost 18 months. And we've been back and forth and back and forth. And, and this actually was created document from last August, July and August. And as we started to move through it with, with Steve Horton at the helm, it was working out very well. As we basically provided this document and information to the high school, there were questions and we were trying to answer those. Originally, the cost was that they were going to bear the burden of the cost because more than anything else, they were receiving pretty much exclusive right in order to utilize the Cottonwood Aquatic Center, the pool facility. The, the one area, though, for the last 25 years, to just give a little bit of history for the council's purpose, is that we have not charged anything to the high school. And I know that there's, there's feelings of reciprocity back and forth as it pertains to that, well, we utilize high school facilities for certain recreation programs, but that hasn't actually happened in almost two and a half years whereby we had utilized their, their small gym facility in the back of their, their, their campus for adult volleyball programming. And so this was some time ago. But when you look at the cost of a pool and a pool facility, it's like a giant black hole. We bring in between 40 and $44,000 a year. And the pool facility actually runs the, the community real close to about $140,000 a year. We, we, we studied the time periods and the timeframes. We did all kinds of analysis and we structured it differently. We tried to figure out whether we should go with a lap cost per lap, like some of the communities were doing. Some of the communities were just identifying that they would request that the school entities pay for the chemical cost or pay for chemical and the supervision and the utility cost. And so the cost for, for per lap lane was just exorbitant. It just was just out of everybody's reach. And so we felt that that was not the, the direction we should go. So in reality, over the last two to three years, the cost between August 15th to around November 5th or 6th, however long that they're usually there, are running between 17 and $22,000. When we originally started this, it was 17. It's now grown to 22,000 because, again, you're seeing the experiential costs over the last year with transportation of chemical cost as well as utility cost starting to increase. And that's really hit hard over the last year. So that's one of the things we've really got into. And we felt that when we, we talked to them last year that we would meet them halfway. And again, this kind of matches and it meets the, the operational requirements of the 1993 Parks and Recreation Code, which in reality identifies that we are to a minimum required by the council through the ordinance to obtain 50% for all youth programming. This kind of fits within that same realm. And when you look at it, it, it's kind of a good fit. So in, in discussions with the city manager, we really felt that they should pay for 50% and we would pay for 50%. And we felt that that was a good, good across-the-board measure that we should basically entertain. So the city was desirous of cost sharing and we're continuing to, to think that's great. The one thing, though, that council needs to be reminded of is that there was a large group of people that came forth and requested that the pool be increased in size from six lanes to eight lanes. And during that time period, everyone had indicated, "We will come forward if you build it. We will bring forward also money if you build it." And that did not ever happen. And, you know, we had heard from the high school, "We'll pay for it," you know? And, you know, Rudy and I sat in meetings where we heard that, but it, we did receive last year 8,500, but it was almost like pulling teeth. And we're now coming back and we're, we're wanting to get this to Mingus Union High School because it'll have to go through their board also. But that's one of the things we would like to see is, is that there is a cost recovery obligation here on the behalf of Mingus Union High School whereby the cost for chemicals and utilities during the times of school use, which is a semi-exclusive use, pretty much in reality, it's like what Doug has indicated before, now that the, the, the new pool has been built inside the new recreation center, lap swimmers would utilize the indoor pool. We would shut the facility down totally as of around August 10th. And that's what we would do because in reality, we don't have guards in, to be able to hire because most of those people are high school, you know, youth. And that's who we actually have at the outdoor pool facility. So we would necessarily more likely shut that facility down. So it is, it is a primary exclusive use on the behalf of the high school. Under this agreement, the cost for exclusive use for aquatics center facility would be unilaterally shared as this agreement stipulates by both agencies towards promoting youth programming into the future. All costs pertaining to pool chemicals, electricity, gas, water, sewer, maintenance operations and obligations, and custodial operations costs would be shared equally between the two agencies is what this document identifies. And in accordance with the agreement, in subsequent years, the city shall notify the districts of its proportion share of the cost of operating the pool for that given year, based on the best available information, which we shall provide that we have as it pertains to all of the utilities and all of the chemical costs. And we'll do that each year before July 1st from, for the preceding year. And then the district shall pay that sum to the city in accordance with the agreement. And then this is not to exceed a 10% from the previous year's sum total. And so it can go up basically that 10%. And again, right now, we're already seeing the 22,000 that we're paying at this point from just last year. If we were actually doing this right now in this agreement, we would be requesting that they would be really close to paying 9,200 to 9,300 if my memory serves me correctly. I'm not that good at math, 10% on what the cost would be, but that's pretty close. And, and it still doesn't meet that $11,000 50% cost that we have incurred last year. So with that, are there any questions as it pertains to this IGA agreement with the high school?
Mr. Pratt?
It's about time. We've talked about this a while. We've been really generous with the high school.
Yes.
At times, some of us felt like they were a little bit demanding. And we have served them well and met their needs. And I think it's time for them to burden some of the cost. And certainly, we want to support our high school kids and those kind of activities that are good for them. But the high school can support them, too. So I think it's a good agreement and I think it's a fair agreement and I think it's about time.
It seems like a good collaborative MOU.
That's right.
We're paying some, they're paying some, and that kind of takes the burden off of each entity. And it still shows that we totally support our kids and the community and we're paying our share.
That's right.
Yeah. Did you have a comment, Mr. Ilinski?
I agree.
Yeah, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve resolution number 2646, approving, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mingus Union High School School District for use of the Cottonwood Aquatic Center from August to November of each year.
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the public? If not, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please read resolution number 2646.
Resolution number 2646, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mingus Union High School District for use of the city's outdoor aquatic center.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, resolution number 2647, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division, ADOT, for interim funding for the CAT and Verdi-Links transit systems. Mr. Faust?
Honorable mayor and council, I'm sure everybody's read through this huge document. I just wanted to bring forth this information as we, as Rudy has already adeptly kind of put, put this information in front of the council. We are quickly moving in this direction by July 1st. And one of the things that we all of a sudden figured out was, as we were discussing this with the state of Arizona, ADOT, Matt Carpenter, who's their manager over the 5311 section grant operations for rural transportation funding, was how are we going to, you know, I guess go about getting reimbursed back as it pertains to this three-month period of time between July 1st and September 30th? Due to the fact that NATA had shortened the length of the time period that they felt that they wanted to actually operate the CAT and the Links operation, the 5311 grant goes from October 1st until September 30th. That's the full year of the grant. However, as NATA bailed out, they, they indicated to us that their last day would be June 30th. So we have a three-month expanse of interim whereby there needs to be reimbursables back to the city as we start expending funding. And that funding, in reality, normally would go to NATA and, because they were the ones that applied for the funding. We requested directly to the state, would there be a possibility that we could formulate a, a quick interim IGA that would, in effect, allow us to then go directly to ADOT, excuse me, ADOT Transportation and cut out the middleman? And because doing business in that context gets really sticky. And we didn't want that to occur. And so that was the direction we went. And that's the reason for this IGA document that is before you. I do know that there's still a few things and a few items that are identified in here by our attorney, Steve Horton, that are, there's some housekeeping items. There's also some exclusionary language at the end of section four, point 1.5, that probably doesn't apply to us. It isn't meant to because we're not self-insured. There's also some other aspects of this agreement that need to be clarified. And so we're just asking the council to approve this as it pertains to entering into the agreement, subject to the city attorney's approval at this point in time. And so again, but it is fast-tracking. We're trying to get through this document as quickly as we can. But by entering into this agreement document with the state of Arizona, Cottonwood, we'll be able to enjoy the more simplistic avenue of dealing directly with the state authorities instead of dealing with NATA, who will then request reimbursements from the state on the city of Cottonwood's behalf. Such an operation approach would instigate a non-efficient cycle of funding if we were to go to NATA, try to get the reimbursement for operations and services for city transit operations. And this IGA between the, the city of Cottonwood and the state would provide for a more rapid and systematic approach to finances, billings, and other areas of responsibility and, and need. Are there any questions from the council pertaining to this document?
It was, it was the kind you wanted to read when you wanted to sleep and couldn't?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Yes, Mr. Dowling?
I'd like to offer the third no-brainer of the evening, perhaps.
I agree.
I think we should, we should approve it. In fact, I'd like to make a motion if nobody else has any questions or concerns.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? If not, Mr. Dowling, please.
I move to approve resolution number 2647, agreeing to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division pertaining to Cottonwood's management and operation of residual 5311 rural transportation grant funding with regard to reimbursable costs for the CAT and Verdi-Links transit systems from July 1st through September 30th, 2012.
Second. Mr. Dowling made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please read resolution number 2647 by title only.
Resolution number 2647, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, agreeing to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation Multimodal Planning Division, ADOT, for residual 5311 rural transportation grant funding for the Cottonwood Area Transit and Verdi-Links Transportation Systems from July 1st through September 30th, 2012. Madam mayor.
Thank you very much. All right. The next item is resolution, oh, excuse me. Item number 10 is request to hire an additional transportation supervisor for the CAT-Verdi-Links Transit Systems. Mr. Faust, it's just your night tonight, huh?
Yes, it is. I'm still right here, so I'm not going away yet. Honorable mayor and council, in your packet of information, this is a request for council's consideration of a position, once again, in the context of the CAT and Verdi-Links for transportation field supervisor. Just refreshing council's memory, in February and March, we had come to council requesting all the positions for both the CAT and the Links. This was my fault in the context of, we felt that, actually, I felt that we had all of the, Bruce isn't here, that's good. It is that I felt that we had everything taken care of and, as it pertains to positions, we wanted to make sure that we transferred all of, every position that was included with NATA and pertaining to the Verdi-Links and the Cottonwood Area Transit Systems over into Cottonwood. We felt, I felt, that we could probably cut out one of the transportation supervisor positions and it would work out okay. And not being involved in transportation that much, I forgot that, that we're, we're moving into a seven-day operation and not a five. And in other words, when we take on the Verdi-Links, the Verdi-Links basically operate seven days a week from 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. every single day. And I'm used to doing the CAT system and it operates Monday through Friday, and that's from 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. And so with that in mind, we can't operate with, when we come to, in the mornings to make our inspections of vehicles, when we do a fit-for-duty operation in the morning with all of our operators according to state guidelines and the 5311 Rural Transportation Fund guidelines, state very specifically, you have to do a fit-for-duty, you have to also check out your systems. I can't, well, we cannot have just one supervisor doing all that work plus a transportation manager. It just wouldn't work because the transportation manager is going to be working basically Monday through Friday. And he doesn't realize it yet, but he's going to be working a lot on Saturdays and Sundays. And that's the nature of the beast of transportation. And he does realize that. But to have a transportation supervisor in effect will assist us on that, that Links route in Saturdays and Sundays. One of the things was difficult for me to do was to convince Rudy that there was money in the 5311 funds that we had originally applied for. When I wrote the grant for the 5311 Rural Transportation Funds, we had written the grant specifically to take all of those employees over. And so we duplicated what NATA had done preceding in the 2011, 2013 grant. And so what that did was, is there was, there was residual monies in there and I had to show it to him visually because Rudy's very visual when it comes to numbers. And so I had to do that. And he did agree. We, if we hired on this position, we still have a residual left over for permanent personnel between 25 and 30,000 even at this time period in the, the rural transportation grant fund. And so that means that we would just be taking that on and taking on that responsibility. So if you have any questions for Rudy or myself as it pertains to this position, we'll be happy to try to answer those.
Council, questions?
The total cost would be this 25,000 you're talking about?
Excuse me?
The cost for this person, okay, the salary would be what?
Real close to 50,000 with benefits. So the cost would be really close to $50,000 with benefits. Even after we would hire that person, there would still be a residual of approximately 25 to 30,000 left over in the budget after this person would be hired.
Okay, that was my question.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Just for the record, mayor, Rudy knew the money was in there all the time. He was just putting Richard through the wringer.
Everybody has to answer, right? For every penny, that's a good thing.
Rudy's great. He helped a lot. He really did.
That's a good thing.
Madam mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hattig.
My colleague said earlier, this is, appears to be a no-brainer if we want transportation on the weekends for our, our citizens, so.
Absolutely. And would you like to make a motion?
I would. I would like to make the motion to hire an additional transportation supervisor. I would like to make the motion to, uh, hire an additional transportation supervisor for the CAT-Verdi-Links transit systems.
Second.
So Councilmember Haddig made the motion, Vice, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Norman seconded it. Are there any comments from the public on this item? If not, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We've had a lot of no-brainer items on our agenda tonight, huh?
I'd like to thank Rudy, too.
That's the no-brainer agenda. All right. The next item is request for council contingency funds to assist in bringing the American Veterans Traveling Tribute Vietnam Memorial Wall to Cottonwood. And I think, um, some of our VFW, um, members of this committee were supposed to be here tonight, and it looks like they probably forgot. Or they said, "Oh, it's the last item on the agenda, no way." But, so I'll go ahead and, um, and Doug's also been attending those meetings so he can add anything to it. I think that the city manager was hoping that we could fundraise for all, all the money that we needed, but what's kind of happened in the planning process is that, um, there were two different walls, uh, two different groups of veterans that have walls that we were trying to figure out which one we could get, because they go across the country and they can't always be here at a certain time. And we wanted to have the wall here, the one that we do get, um, when Cottonwood is sponsoring the Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home Day, which last year Sedona sponsored, and we said we would take our turn this year. So this, the one that we were able to get at this time costs six thousand dollars. And I, I gave you all the information in your packet, but it's a, a wall that is an exact replica of the Vietnam wall that's in Washington DC, but it's a scale of what, Doug, three-quarters?
Eighty percent.
Seventy-five percent?
Yeah.
Or eighty percent?
Okay. Um, so in order to secure this wall, they, uh, the group has to pay three thousand dollars by June thirtieth of the entire six thousand dollars, and they have already fundraised and secured a thousand dollars for the project. The group is also talking about how they can raise the rest of the three thousand dollars to, to meet the six thousand dollar requirement, and they have ideas on how to do that. Um, but in order to make the deadline, we need the council to, um, help us out with two thousand dollars, and we're requesting that to come from this year's contingency fund, and I, we have, how much do we have left, Rudy? Do you have that in your pocket?
I thought it was eighteen thousand left. Or nine thousand.
I, I, or was it seventeen?
In reality, I think we already zeroed out the contingencies funds because we were, we weren't expecting this particular one. What we'll have to do is just take it out of our fund balance for this year.
But we hadn't actually officially have our funds until the thirtieth of June, correct? No?
In, in reality, we, we've already started trimming down. We do the revised budget.
Right. I saw those...
So we can take it out, so...
I saw seventeen thousand council contingency with a minus on it. Is that what you're meaning? Okay, thank you.
But what we'll do, we'll just go ahead and, and we, we go ahead and just add it there and take it out of the fund balance, and we'll be nowhere so where.
Okay. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I'm, I'm biased here again because I did have two older brothers who served there, and a lot of friends and other relatives and know a lot of people that did, and I think we didn't do a great job of honoring those young men and women who we sent off to a pretty, so anything we could do now, too, I think we should take part in.
And not only that, this also gives us an opportunity to show our youth, you know, how we got where we're at today and the sacrifices that were made there, you know?
Good point.
I still get a lot of the young kids from, from high school who are amazed, for whatever reason, conversations we get into when I said that I was a veteran of Vietnam, and their ears perk up and they want to hear about this. Now, I'm not going to claim any heroics or anything, but the fact is, is that our youth have to know how this country got to this point, you know, what the sacrifices were made and who made them, so this, this is what's in there. That's a very good point, Ruben.
Uh, Vice Mayor? I've seen the wall, the traveling wall, it's really, and I've seen the real wall, and it's, it's really moving to, the traveling wall is really inspirational also. And I'll, and I think, well, piggybacking on Ruben's comment, the children also need to, to know how they were disrespected when they came home and how we don't ever need to go that route again with anybody coming home from, uh, conflict or a war. And the group is talking about not only our veterans and the sacrifice they made, which was great, and kind of the slap in the face they got when they got home, but they're talking about the families, too, because the wives, I mean, with post-traumatic stress syndrome and some of the issues that our Vietnam veterans had, those of us who lived with them, when they came home, didn't always have such an easy life. And I, what the group wants to do, Mr. Lucefrom, who was, is the past commander of the VFW and the other planners, uh, they want to honor the families, too, because the families have had, you know, a tough time sometimes, the children. I've talked, I talked to some, some veterans in Sedona the day of the Welcome Home, and one gentleman was, one veteran was sharing with me how he treated his family and his children, and they didn't know what was wrong, and he has so many regrets, but there's a lot of pain in families from this particular war, too, because there were no names for the symptoms that our soldiers and veterans came home with, and those things were discovered a lot later. We have a lot of, uh, people, I, I just met with, um, a Vietnam veteran, Mr. John Razzo, who is trying to seek a, um, funds for, or a bus for some of our ninety-year-old, uh, veterans that go out and do these honor guard duties. And, um, many of the veterans were sprayed with Agent Orange, and their, the health problems that they're encountering now are sometimes fairly severe.
Yeah, basically, the thought on that is that if you served in Vietnam at any time, whether it's five minutes or five years, you were exposed to Agent Orange.
You were sprayed. Yeah. It's in the ground and everywhere.
Government view of that.
So, um, that's my report to council, and like I said, it was pretty, our document here was pretty thorough on this issue. So, Mr. Pratt, did you?
I would, I would make a motion.
Please.
I recommend providing funding, two thousand dollars, for the American Veterans Traveling Tribute, Traveling Wall from council's two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve contingency funds.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it. Any comments from the public? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, and I would like to thank the council for your support of our veterans, all of our veterans in any wars. We appreciate you. Okay, the next item is, um, claims and adjustments.
I move. We pray the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay, the, the, the Councilmember Norman made the motion, and the Councilmember, Member Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. I move, we adjourn.
Okay.
The mayor made the motion, did you second it? Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.